Hi, good evening and welcome, everybody. I would like to call to order the Monday, June 12th, 2017 meeting of the Lake County School Board to order. If we would first begin by rising for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Superintendent, I believe you have somebody very special to introduce to start us off.
I do, and good evening. I'd like to introduce School Related Employee of the Year, Mishika Thomas. Mishika is a data entry operator at Carver Middle School, where she is responsible for maintaining accurate and up-to-date information related to schedules, attendance, and grades, completing various reporting tasks for the State Department of Education, and answering phones and greeting guests in the main office. She enrolls new students, handles report cards, helps track data, and assists staff and families with Skyward. She is involved in Carver's PTO and serves as Secretary for the SAC. She designs and writes Carver's monthly newsletter, takes pictures at after-school activities, and oversees ticket sales at athletic events. A letter from the nominating committee reads, "Where Ms. Thomas shines brightest, however, is in the way she gives of her own efforts and time to go beyond her assigned duties." So, welcome, and we look forward to hearing from you later this evening.
Thank you.
Excellent. And do you have any updates you'd also like to share with us this evening?
I do. So, hopefully, you noticed the great music as you came in. If you came in early, you were able to enjoy the musical performance by the Lake Minneola High School Choir. Lake Minneola actually has five choirs under the direction of Mrs. Terry Jo Fox. The Lake Minneola Choirs have earned top scores of Superior on the district's MPA, that's the Music Performance Assessment, and they qualified for the state MPA. The beginner and intermediate course earned scores of excellent at the state level, and their advanced choir earned scores of Superior, the highest level that a choir can receive. So, we just wanted to share the great work going on at Lake Minneola with the choirs and congratulate them, along with Director Terry Jo Fox, for all their hard work and for sharing their talents with us this evening. And as you probably know, the state released some more data from this year's FSA and intercourse exams, and Lake County showed gains in several areas in grade levels. In English Language Arts, it was growth in grades three, four, six, seven, and 10. And in math, we saw growth in grades three, four, and seven. And our largest gains were in Algebra I, where we saw an 11% increase in student scoring proficient. Our civic scores also increased by 6%. So, lots to celebrate. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll continue to analyze the data to determine our next steps to support student learning for the upcoming school year. And we will look at instructional practices that are working with our students and find ways to replicate those in all of our classrooms. So, stay tuned for more information about how we'll be looking to improve student achievement in the coming year.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. For the agenda tonight, we have one public input card on item 8.15, so we'll pull that one for separate consideration. Oh. This one's a whole host of items. Perhaps, as Vance told, oh, there you are. Would you like to speak to these during public input? And I guess if one of them, if board members, you decide one of those, you'd like some more information to discuss, then perhaps we can pull that one rather than pull all three. Board members, do you have any others that you'd like to pull, or Superintendent as well? Anything?
Yes, we have pulled items 8.02 and 8.03 for no action, along with 10.01 for no action.
And I wanted to pull 10.06.
Say that one more time.
10.06.
10.06. All right, you got it. Any others? All right, we'll go with that. That brings us to the approval of the minutes. We have a couple of those that need approval.
I recommend approval of the minutes from the executive session for collective bargaining May 22nd, 2017, and the regular school board meeting dated May 22nd, 2017.
All right, board members, there is the recommendation from the Superintendent, a motion by Bill, and a second by Stephanie. Any other questions or comments before voting? Kristy was trying to jump in there, but, boy, you were ruthless.
I didn't even look at her. I didn't even make eye contact with her.
All right, then, let's go ahead and put it to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Approval of the minutes carries 5-0. We don't have any representation tonight, so we'll move straight into public input. The first card we have tonight is from Shirley Decker. Come on down. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, thank you so much. My name is Shirley Decker. I am the founder of Gray Pit, Inc. It's a collaborative of executives, project managers, facilitators, authors, and business leaders. And my presentation, like all of the items on your agenda tonight, are about the students. This generation of digital natives amazes us with their courage and tenacity. At the same time, they face a future that will be so different from the time of their parents, that even the traditional pathways to success are filled with new uncertainties. Whether their dream is to pursue traditional higher education, master a trade, start their own business, or simply change the world, certain skills remain fundamental. They must learn to become servant leaders, collaborators, and community builders. Gray Pit is fusing our strengths and our team to reach out to young people in the Seven County, Central Florida area, primarily high school juniors and seniors. To attend our first national event of this kind, Gray Pit Live presents Students: Ignite Your Life. And life to us is an acronym of Leadership, Innovation, Focus, and Empowerment. The event will be held on Tuesday, October 17th, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon in the Orlando-Kasimi area. And during this half-day event, speakers will bring to the audience a strong mix of case studies, personal experience, and motivation for all the channels in our audience, whether that's teachers, parents, or students. Our speakers can guide young people to think about how actions they take now lead to their future plans. Whether students are pursuing higher education immediately following high school, or enrolling in trade or technology training, grooming their leadership and community service skills is vital to a productive and rewarding future. We are seeking support from corporate giants. Of course, all the names that love young people, EA Sports, Nike, and a few of our local companies have already taken interest. So, along with partnerships with Florida-based universities to promote and execute this event. So, my goal tonight is to make initial contact with you, the school board, to present this event and seek guidance on promoting it within the high schools, and ultimately to make this a designated annual field trip event in the fall. Is there a contact person that you would recommend that I can work with to navigate all of the processes necessary? I understand, for example, logistics with busing is quite unique, so now we're going to try and find a sponsor for that, because that just sounded too hard to tackle. I'd also like to know if in the near future I could speak to your Public Information Officer and your representative to the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition. Thank you so much for your time and allowing us to present this idea.
All right, thank you very much. We do have your contact information here.
Yes, I have concept papers to give to each of the board members.
Oh, very good.
I'll give to Natalie, so you can see a little bit more about it.
Great, thank you.
And thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. One other speaker at this time, Vance Jokum, please come on down.
I gave Natalie copies of some things I wrote up on three agenda items. But very first today, Trump had a cabinet meeting, and he had the Education Department, or maybe, is he, actually, I forget which department, but they had a press conference on how they're gonna really push apprenticeship programs with companies and what they call private-to-private. And I would suggest that if this school board wanted to be a destination education school district, one of the things is to plan ahead, because I think this apprenticeship program is gonna take off, they're gonna put tax benefits behind it or something, and like to have in construction, but in all sorts of other fields. And that they've already talked to a lot of CEOs of large companies, and if you start planning on what that will look like here, and if you are one of the first in Florida to be ready to have that and roll it out, it might be good. Okay, tab 8.17, completion of the annual review of school funds totaling about $9.2.9 million. I want to commend Tom Mock for coming out with this audit. This is a routine thing we've seen over the years, even when I was on the Audit Committee. And there are many improvements in there. But one thing I looked at is that there's nobody that seems to be in charge of making sure that all these schools are doing that. There was no comment from any senior manager. It was just a single page from each of the schools, and I would think that there would be a senior administrator who is responsible for oversight of this, because in the past, I don't think there's ever been anybody. They all tend to avoid it. And yet, you've got all this money, and the reputation of the school is, can be affected if things blow up on this. And I've written more details there. Tab 8.19, there's a follow-up audit of the East Ridge Booster Club. If you read that report, you see all of the control problems and what I call mismanagement that went on with that booster club. And many of them have been fixed, but then my question is, do we have the same risk with others? I'm not sure if it's covered by this annual review or not, but I'd like to hear somebody talk about that. And do you have, as Mr. Mock mentioned in his very last paragraph, the situation where you have other booster clubs not under the control of the school district? And can they, I'm reading between the lines here, but are there others that are just as bad? The third one is tab 8.23, annual facility inspections. I'm kind of flabbergasted at this. This is one page. There's no manager involved that signed or responded to this, and they had 992 operations items identified in this inspection. And 1,317 maintenance items were identified, and they cracked it around 89% total of those. So, you had over 2,000 exceptions. Now, given that is spread among some 500 buildings that you have total, but I would think, again, that you'd have a manager that would be responding to this and the system improvements. And was this like what happens at Lake, I think it's like Lady Lake Elementary, Roseanne Bar, Roseanne Brannenberg, the former Commissioner member, used to talk about all the leaky roofs and everything? You've had people in here speaking about it? Is this being highlighted by this report? And why is this buried in a one-page thing without significant items being discussed? And I think you ought to have it on a workshop. Thank you.
All right, thanks for your input, and also the Cliff Notes. Appreciate that as well, for we can continuously refer back to our future reference.
Give me 10 minutes.
10 minutes? All right. With that, we'll move into some reports. The first one, from our School Related Employee of the Year. Welcome. The Superintendent gave a fantastic introduction, and certainly you are very well-accomplished. So, welcome tonight.
Thank you. My first want to just thank everyone for this opportunity to speak tonight, to share a little bit about myself and great things that are happening at Carver Middle. It's an honor to have been selected the School Related Employee of the Year and to represent my school and now the district. I came to the district back in 2011 as a substitute teacher. I then moved on to the literacy paraprofessional. I then went to the ESE clerk, and then last year I became the data entry specialist. By far, it's been one of the most challenging jobs, because as we know, data changes quickly, process procedures, everything changes overnight, but it's one of the jobs that I've enjoyed the most. I have, along with being an employee, I am also a parent. I have a daughter in eighth grade, and I also have a daughter in 10th grade. And because I'm both parent and employee, I am committed to help ensure the success of Lake County schools. Some things that are going on at Carver, Carver has many great things in store for next school year. As everybody knows, we will welcome our next principal. As we wait to hear that announcement on who our next principal will be, it's also a bittersweet time for us, because we're also saying goodbye to Ms. Cunningham, and I've had the privilege of working with her for about six years. And you know, it's gonna be bittersweet, but she's entering the world of retirement, the happy world of retirement, as she says. So, it's been a pleasure. She, along with the other two administrators, they have been one of the best administrative teams that I've worked with, and it's just been an honor to work with her. Some other good news at Carver, our culinary department, at the end of last school year, we had 37 out of 43 students who took the exam through the NRFSAP/SP, which stands for National Registry of Food Safety Professionals. They tested with an 86% pass rate. Carver had the highest number of students at the middle school level to pass this test in all of Lake County. This test is an adult certification exam that also adds credentials behind their name. And just last week, as test scores were released, we learned that Carver shows significant improvement overall in our test scores, which is great news. It's a well-known fact that the school district has a significant impact on our community, and I am really willing and ready to do my part to help Lake County schools as a whole become the district we all want. I envision one day, very soon, our district will be known throughout the state as one of the top districts in the state. I look forward to serving as a School Related Employee Representative and working to make our district one that we all can be proud of. I thank you, Ms. Carnegie, and board members for having me tonight. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Certainly, with the honor of becoming the School Related Employee of the Year is the opportunity to brag about your school, and thank you for sharing so many highlights of Carver. Very well done over there.
Thank you.
Next up, representing the Educational Foundation tonight, we have Audra Dick standing in for Carmen Cullen-Batt. You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Audra Dick, Foundation Community Outreach Liaison, and I am representing the Educational Foundation and Carmen Cullen, who unfortunately could not attend tonight. She had a conflict. This year, our three Apple Mart stores distributed 55,350 in supplies, and our Corps of Apple Mart volunteers donated 724 hours to man and stock our stores. July 1st kicks off Red for Ed, which is our countywide school supply drive. To date, we have secured 66 companies that will promote and drive with signage and have agreed-to-be collection sites. On Monday, July 31st, the drive will culminate with an old-fashioned weigh-in at Wooton Park in Tavares from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. That company has partnered with us and are handling all of the social media. We have been notified by Disney that their cast members are collecting supplies for Lake County again this year, while last year we received four pallets. Our back-to-school ferries are slated for Tavares High School on August 1st, East Ridge High School on August 2nd, and Leesburg High School on August 3rd. We have received three grants this past month, one from Duke Energy totaling $28,000 to re-grant for STEM initiatives, Warren Berry with $5,000 for school supplies, and the Heap Foundation with $4,500 for Take Stock in Children scholarships. Gail Widener has accepted the Foundation Finance and Grant Accountability Specialist position. We will be interviewing for the Take Stock in Children Program Manager position on June 16th. Stepping out for education celebrities are starting to train, and the event will be held at Mission Inn on July 28th and 29th. Tickets are on sale and can be purchased on our website. The Take Stock in Children Spelling Bee is scheduled at Lake Receptions for September 14th. The Executive Conference Call is Wednesday, June 24th at 4:00 p.m., and the next board meeting is Wednesday, June 28th at noon. Do you have any questions?
All right.
Thank you so much.
Seems you all never take a break.
Yeah.
Well done, lots going on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Johnson, anything from the attorney side? All right, very good. With that, we'll move into our consent agenda.
I recommend approval of the following consent agenda items, 8.01, 8.04 to 8.14, 8.16 to 9.08, 10.02 to 10.05, 10.07 to 10.1, I'm sorry, to 10.20.
Very good. There is a recommendation from the Superintendent, a motion by Bill, and a second by Sandy. Any objections to voting on this? All right, then, let's go ahead and put it to vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, the consent agenda carries 5-0. With that, we had some items to do some separate consideration for. Looks like the first one of those is 8.15. We had a public input card on that one, so I'll invite Stuart Klatt down at this time to share his thoughts.
Ready? Go. Okay. Stuart Klatt, LCEA, want to talk to you about 8.15, especially the video camera in the classroom that's being specked out. I've talked before about approving things that were not fully vetted, and I think this might be one of those situations. We've heard the reason being to help the teacher improve their instructional practice. Okay, we have standalone cameras just for that reason. We've heard that we're using it to record students in disciplinary situations. Okay, we've got administrators who can take and support teachers in part there. So, what are the purposes for these cameras? If we look at the spec sheet for the EduCam 360, we see that they are monitored by smartphones and iPads. As we look down through here, it is network-driven, and it is full duplex bidirectional audio that allows interactive communication between camera site and monitoring site. So, what is the full purpose? If we're adding cameras to the classroom, we're obviously changing employment conditions, which opens up another discussion. Having cameras in my classroom, they were supposed to be a standalone security system because I had a seven or eight-room suite. Well, then, they were added into the Lake County Security Camera System, so anybody who had access to security cameras could watch my classroom. Then, I found that it also became the preferable viewing for the front office on their big-screen TV when people came into the school, because it looked cool. So, having, so I'm just afraid of the slippery slope here of cameras in classrooms for one purpose that then go to other purposes, that then have no controls. So, I think in the air of transparency, we do need to have a full discussion on what these are for, how they're gonna be utilized, and some controls on them. Other than that, quickly, we're still, LCEA is still providing ESE 20-point MIP for teachers for recertification. I also have teachers this week taking additional classes from AFT and the FEA, Train the Trainer classes, so we'll be offering more to our professional development arsenal.
All right, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for those offerings. So, I guess to speak about some of the questions here on 8:15.
I can speak to that, because I asked, I actually asked that question.
All right, very good.
So, in our meetings that we have before we come to this meeting, I actually asked the same question, and I was assured by Mr. Wheeler that this was a completely teacher-operated camera, that there is an eye on it that can be closed, and that it then can be controlled via lapel pen? Would you like to?
Dr. Wheeler, feel free to come on down if you'd like to provide some additional details for us.
Okay, Dr. Wheeler. The camera does have an iris, so the teacher can control it through their computer, where they can close the iris, or they can open it. They have control, the teacher has control of the video. Ms. Carnegie did mention, as it is server-based, so there would be one person that would have system-wide control in case there was a crisis. That's any server, someone has control over that. It is role-based, so you assign the roles. Teachers have control of their video. Nobody can release the video unless the teacher chooses to do that, other than that one person that is over the system. So, perhaps, perhaps we push this out to another board meeting, and Mr. Klatt comes over, and we show him and everyone how the system works. I don't know if that would be okay with you.
Yes, I would welcome the opportunity for you to show how it actually operates, and the fact that, as you said, because I've asked this question, as you posted to us earlier, that the teacher does control it, there is, and I asked several times, who on the other end has access? And one person has access in the event of an emergency to be able to turn the camera on should there be an incident in the classroom? So, I was assured that no other individual would have access to operate the camera beyond the classroom teacher. So, a little bit about the, why they exist. It's a great tool for teacher reflection, to videotape a lesson and be able to look at practices, and also to share best practices with other teachers, whether they want to post the video on YouTube, or, I'm sorry, TeacherTube, or some other site which we're gonna open access to, so that teachers have greater access to those resources. It's just a great professional development tool. So, that is the intent. It is not to monitor children or to monitor teachers from afar. So, I think that just reassuring Mr. Klatt and all teachers of the intent and making sure that we're committed to nothing beyond, that might help. So, I would welcome the opportunity for you to meet with Dr. Wheeler and have that discussion and look at the system, if you would.
And we could do this through a workshop. You could present a workshop on it.
Can you bring us an aye?
Well, right now, I'm set up in my conference room. I'd have to move all of the equipment to the board. The boardroom is not.
We could have a boardroom meeting at your conference room.
Okay.
Just videotape yourself doing the video, and then we'll present the video.
Okay. We'll work through that.
Also, video the equipment itself, so we can see what it is.
Okay, absolutely.
So, board members, I'm getting the feel that you'd rather not take action on this particular item tonight, that you would like to see this information first. Superintendent, are you willing to pull up for no action?
Absolutely. We'd like to pull up for no action.
All right. So, the Superintendent's pulled up for no action tonight, so we'll come back. Thank you very much for that information. All right, so with that, we'll jump to 10.06, which, Dr. Burns, I think you had pulled this one.
Yeah, I did pull this one. We have discussed this extensively at workshops. This is Lake Charter Academy. I just, I understand the situation that the board is in completely. Essentially, I don't think I'm alone in feeling like this is not a particularly good charter board that came before us. And however, it likely will be overturned. If we vote it down, it will be likely overturned in the, in an appeals process in Tallahassee. However, I personally decided I can't support this one, so I'm willing to roll the dice if we're willing to take it to mediation or the appeals process for $200,000, $2,500. But I understand how the rest of the board feels.
So, if I recall.
And with that, I'm ready to vote.
So, if I recall, the big sticking point on, well, from a contractual standpoint that we had some concern about was that they hadn't designated a location by statute. They need to do that.
We made three changes since the workshop. The first one was on the startup date. Rather than having it delayed two years, they asked to have it delayed one year with the option to do a second year. We deleted language in the agreement that required us to pay for the initial evaluation for ESE placement, although they're not giving up the argument that we have to do that just yet. It's not gonna be in the contract. And we modified the language regarding the facilities. They still were unable to give me a location where they planned on putting the school. So, what I did was the best I thought under the circumstances, essentially, we have a six-month notice of where the location is gonna be before the school opens, which we would only, we would have less than that if they picked a location right now. So, it tried to give us more notice than we would have otherwise, but they have not, they do not and cannot give us a location, because they haven't decided on one yet.
And even if they did put a location in here, they could just change it at any time anyway.
They would, we are required to do it unless we have reason not to do it.
Right. But none of that changes the fact that their board is out of Pinellas. But none of that changes the fact that their board is out of Pinellas, which for me is, is a big thing.
I did talk about the board member, the Lake County Board Member, and they told me that what they were talking about, what was, what I thought we would hear, is the Lake County Parent Representative, the new parent representative in every county that's been last two or three years in the charter school law, and they will have that person, but they will not have a Lake County member, because this board operates schools in several different counties.
Right. And, and they're also, we know, not high-quality or innovative, and I, like, that's, that's, I'm fine with how you all vote.
Was there a change in the Code of Conduct? Because I know we talked about that.
Without changing the language of the contract, we read that, and the Code, it says in the Code of Conduct that they will adopt the Code of Conduct outlining the application, and we looked back at that, and it says the Lake County Code of Conduct.
Okay.
Now, they are going to revise out certain things like getting waivers for uniforms and things of that nature, but, that they would have to come back before us to do what they're already planning on doing it anyway. But the over, the general, and I was assured that they do it in every county, that they utilize the local county's Code of Conduct, they don't go in and rewrite their own. That does not eliminate the fact that they would have the right to remove students from their school for, for issues that we would not expel students for.
Mr. Johnson, what does that appeal look like from a cost of the?
I gave Ms. Berns about $2,500 estimate. It's just driving up to Tallahassee, I mean, preparing for it and going up there.
That certainly changes my opinion.
That helped, I need to.
Well. I, I have to say this, that, that, that we have an obligation, and being inspired by the superintendent's message, that we are going to be the, the school of choice, that we also, that puts us in a position of being, and I've always felt this, a district that should demand absolute excellence, and that the Charter USA, they're, they could not have done worse, in my opinion, than when they came before us, as far as I'm concerned. So I thought that the litigation of this matter would be much more than $2,500, and we'll pay that to watch amongst.
That's just going to the commission, it then gets appealed, depending if the commission rules in our favor, then again gets appealed to the Board of Education. So that quote was to go up there to this hearing and argue that.
No, I, I'm really asking how much all-in, because you know that they will, they're going to appeal.
Well, I mean, if we lose all the way, it's cheaper, unfortunately. If, if they lose, then they'll go to court, and then you're talking about thousands of dollars. I mean, I can't even give you an estimate on that based upon what I know right now, but they could, if they said the Department of Education ruled against them, and went and decided that they would not be able to go forward with it, they could then potentially appeal it to court. Where we are at the beginning, the first two hearings, if you will, are with the Charter Appeal Commission, and then the Board of Education.
Could we, along that, along that path of, of the appeal process, if we feel like they've, they've supported us, and now we're going the second round, then they're going to court, I mean, at what point would we be, would we be able to stop it and say, okay? Or do you know, once you're in the process, are you stuck in the process?
No, you can concede and give them the contract they asked for, although we would probably have to renegotiate it.
And so that would push?
There are items in here that are somewhat more to our benefit than the standard Florida contract, that we put in specifically to help us a little bit. I mean, it's pretty closely follows the form contract that the Department of Education has provided.
Right. I, I, I mean, for me, it's about, I mean, we've talked about being a destination location, and that includes all of the schools in Lake County, and bringing in a subpar, what appears to be a subpar, and I hope it wouldn't be, but I don't think goes along with that idea.
I'm going to raise a question of integrity here. Then they come before us as a board, after we've presented these concerns about not having a Lake County member as part of their board, and they told us that they'd include one, and that similarly, they would address this through their Code of Conduct, that what, they would not be allowed to dismiss a student for some minor discipline issue, but still they could do that under this contract. So that's two big red flags, why we approved their charter to begin with, or why we approved their application. Here, they're backpedaling on those, those two things that make in the contract.
Now they're not even in the Claremont General Area, now it's all of Lake County. That really bothers me, too.
Well, I put Lake County in just to make sure that there wasn't some attempt to build a school in another county. They couldn't, but I didn't want that to happen. And I also promised the, their attorney that I'd tell you that they were going to have somebody here tonight, but they had a conflict, and we're not going to be able to make it.
I think we've heard that story before.
We have, a couple of times.
All right.
And they're not, they're not replicating. What is their, what is their status again? How are they?
They're, they are a company starting a new charter. They have no special consideration in that regard.
I, I know we've had some discussion without putting a motion out on the floor first, and I guess shame on me for skipping that part of parley pro there, but Superintendent, I guess we would first look for a recommendation from you to either bring it or not bring it.
I told you I was going to pull it. I know, I know you did, I had a heads up. So, based on what I hear, based on your concerns, the fact that, I, I too, I mean, I, I want us to be the best. I don't, I don't want to carry a school that I don't feel is, is, is the best for our kids, and so I, I'm going to recommend that you not approve it. 10.06, Lake Charter Academy. So moved.
All right, so we have a recommendation from the superintendent that we reject the contract as presented, and a motion by Christie, and a second by Bill. Any questions or comments or discussion before we vote on this? Remember, we're voting.
Before we vote, we need, I need to have stated on the record what the reason that we're not approving the contract.
So you need to repeat what you said.
Innovation, location, transportation, is that still on the table?
Well, I don't think that's ever a reason that they turned them down.
Location, there's no location. I would say innovation's number one.
Lack of innovation and lack of.
Integrity.
Lack, well, the, the location is a statutory item, right?
Yes.
So, so there's basis for that.
And then wouldn't the budget for the transportation piece, you could call it the budget, there's concerns about the budget.
That was the other thing. They, they said in the, in the workshop that they would bring forth some line in the contract about producing a revised budget that would be reflective of that increased, increased teacher salary.
And I would think location would be affected by budget.
Yeah, yeah.
The budget.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Understand something, you approved the application. So whatever they had in the application, I, I don't think they're going to.
With, with the caveat of their statements.
And that's what I'm saying. Anything that happened after the application, based on anything they did, but to get to this contract, I mean, that's what we're going to be limited for, to arguing. We're not going to be able to go back and argue that you didn't like the way the curriculum was set up, because you already approved that curriculum, and they, nobody said anything about doing anything differently since then.
We did say it, I, I will say, because I, I did bring up the innovative.
I voted against.
That was one of the original points.
But it was original, and we've approved it, so I get what you're saying. We did speak about it, but. Well, then you have the, the statute requires them to have a board, is it not a board member, but it's somebody that's from this district outside of the parent liaison, or are they able to skirt?
Statute doesn't require that, it's just a concession they had made to us, but now apparently they've pulled back.
They're saying that that was the parental representative that is required.
I was going to say it is required, I've seen.
But it's in the contract.
But not, not the representative on the governing board.
That's not what we said, though.
That's not what we said.
And they agreed to have someone on there.
That's right. They, they agreed that even though it wasn't statutorily required, they were still going to go ahead and acknowledge that this concern about not having any Lake County representation, they'd put somebody on the governing board for the county, and, and they've not done that.
Right.
Is the location viable? In their application, they didn't have a location either, so are we able to use the location as a?
Yes, we are, because it's supposed to be, they're supposed to have it in the contract.
They actually gave us a location at the time when they met before us. They had in Hancock, somewhere on Hancock Road, which that struck me as odd, since we had Pinecrest coming in, and I'd actually spoken to Derek about that, just being fair, that that was like a goofy place to go, when we had a charter already opening, and he never gave me hint that, excuse me, I'm sorry, he did say that they would go wherever there was a need. So on one hand, they've expressed a desire, but on the other hand, I just don't see where they put the effort forward to meet us and meet our, and understand our concerns, and that bothers me. So, so if this is coming to us for a reason, I suppose, and that's because there's been changes, right? Well, hence, I'm changing my mind, so.
I mean, I think the fact that there's no integrity is a really good point, and I think we can bring into question the rest of their.
They promised a bunch of stuff.
Well, I, I, I think when, because if, the only thing that ever really fires me up is someone speaks to my integrity, so I really don't want to go there with them, other than they just haven't done what they said they were going to do. And maybe, no, no, no. Okay, this is out of three sides of my mouth. Okay, this is, okay, I'm going to suck all that back in, and I did not say anything. No, but, I mean, I think that they were trying to sell us, and sometimes you get carried away with yourself.
All right. Mr. Johnson, are those enough reasons for you? You've got everything you need?
We'll just go forward with whatever.
All right. So remember, a vote in the favor here is to reject the application.
To reject the contract.
Yes, reject the contract, that's right. All right, ready to vote? All right, all those in favor of rejecting the contract, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay? All right. Reject it 5-0.
I did not expect that.
All right. This brings us to discussion. First item is 11.01, Revisions to Policy on the Internal Audit Process.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, the matter for discussion before the board is tentative approval of the revisions to Policy 7.61, Internal Audit Process. If there's anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to this policy, please come forward to the podium at this time. Chairman, no one's coming forward, and believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Recommend approval of the revisions to Policy 7.61, Internal Audit Process.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Motion from Bill, and a second by, who is it?
Me.
Stephanie, you got it, it's yours. Any other discussion or questions or comments before voting? All right, and let's put a two vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay? And that carries 5-0. And for our second item under discussion tonight, that's the tentative approval of the 2017-18 Code of Student Conduct and Policy Guide. I do believe we'll have a presentation on this one. Is that right?
Yes, Ms. Sabrina Dillon-Banks is going to just highlight a few of the changes to the Code of Conduct.
Good evening, Superintendent, Chairman, and Board Members, and members of the audience. I will give a brief overview of the process for preparing the Code of Student Conduct. All the items are in Board Docs for your review. I will take just a few minutes to explain the process. The code is derived from statute, Department of Education Best Practices and Recommendations, and also Lake County School Board current policies. The code is reviewed by the school board attorney, as well as a committee that consists of parents, teachers, school-based administrators, district administrators, local law enforcement agency representatives, school board, and school board members. We've provided a list inside of the document if you're interested in actually seeing the individuals who participate. The purpose of the Code of Student Conduct is to establish the school board's framework for rights and responsibilities, as well as establishing the expectations of student behavior in Lake County schools. Our vetting process started in December. We met with the district departments. We then met in April with the committee. In May, the committee also did some communication with opportunities for feedback and updates. In June, it was reviewed by the attorney, as well as our district leadership and board members, and tonight, we're here for tentative approval, and hopefully in July, for a final approval, that is, the vetting process for the Code of Conduct. Revisions mostly are consisting of changes, organizational changes and cleanup, clarification to good language, as well as updates to House Bill and other statutes from legislators. I've included a list of all the sections that had changes, and the new items that are also added to the Code of Conduct for this year. There are just a few sections that I would call attention to for your review. God bless you. Would be Section 1, Students' Rights and Responsibilities, that's our social media section and attendance, as well as Section 5 for Policies that Govern student Behavior, which is the bullying and harassment section. We added some new information there, as well as Section 8, Extracurricular Activities. Those are the sections that I would bring your attention to. And our final piece is how the code can be accessed by parents and students. We always encourage our parents to please review that document annually with their children, because each year, we revise and make updates to different items, and we want to make sure that the students and parents are aware of those updates. The code is reviewed at the beginning of the year by staff. Hard copies are available. When parents make that request, we will provide them with a hard copy. It's also available on the website, and we're hopefully going to pilot putting it in Skyward for family access, so that's our next piece, to hopefully try to do that in 1718. Are there any questions for me regarding the Code of Student Conduct and Policy Guide for 1718?
Only have a couple. The $5,000 to $10,000, that was for printing of this.
Yes, sir, that would be for the printing of that.
But it's done by request.
Right, we, well, we go ahead and make those copies. We purchased between $7,000 and $8,000 copies to have on hand, so every student doesn't get one, but we have that when the parents make the request.
Is this the size of it?
It's about, it's about that size, the actual document, but it's about 100 pages long.
Because the font is like a one, like, I don't know.
It's, it's very small. It is, it is small, it is small, to get everything in, to get everything in, because the larger the print, the more the pages, and the, the cost would go.
It'd go up if it was the size, bigger font, do you think?
Say again?
If it were regular, eight and a half by 11.
It is, it is, the code is an eight and a half by 11 document.
Oh.
Oh, you're talking about that small size? No, 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 it's an eight and a half by 11 document. It's eight and a half by 11 document. I thought when you held it up, you were talking about the size of the page, not, no, it would be a pamphlet, so, no.
About that print.
No, I think it's about an eight-point print, not that small.
Normally, it fills the page, the print's a little larger, although it isn't all that big, but there's your advantage, once again, to look at it online, where you click a little plus button and zoom in.
You can expand it.
It's like this big.
Right, right.
I'm not trying to cause people having vision problems.
From 69 to 100.
Spectacle?
Yes. We're going to hand out magnifying glasses on the first day of school.
Did you say you had a couple of questions?
That was it.
Oh, that was it.
Was it just the print?
Very good.
I have sort of a list, so if y'all would be patient with me, because we didn't workshop it. On page, you might need popcorn, on page one, I'm sorry, on the introduction page. The sentence that was added during a reasonable time before and after the student is on the premises for attendance at school, or for authorized participation in a school-sponsored activity, comma, and only went on the premises, that didn't, I think that's, like, and only not went on the premises? Each student must obey the district rules.
You're talking about the one word that was added? The one word? Or the green strike?
No, that one line.
That's in green?
Is that correct? Did I read it wrong?
During a reasonable time before and after the student is on premises for attendance, that, that line?
Yeah.
That line came from statute. That was a piece that we were missing, that, that was from statute that we currently did not have in the policy, and when we looked at the statute, we realized that we were missing language that was in the statute, don't know how that got missed, but that's why it's added.
Okay.
Miss Mia.
And, and please help me with what is and is not in statute. On page one, number 19, where it says, express and publicize their opinions and, and ideas in such a manner so as not to offend, slander, or libel others. If we're allowing people to publicize things, sometimes those offend people, like slander and libel are things, but offend. and libel are things, but offending is kind of vague? Does that?
You're talking about under student rights and responsibilities?
I think that's more statutory language as well.
Right. Another thing, when we checked the statute, it was like bits and pieces were put in the code, not everything that was in statute.
No, this, we were back and forth, which is statute.
So, yeah, we just tried to make sure that what we have was representative of, of the statute language, language for the rights and respons, the rights part.
Okay. On page, I tried to mark it. Okay, then tell me if this is, on page two, number two, it says, like, under family responsibilities, one is ensuring their child lives in the assigned school zone. Given school choice, is that correct? Because, I mean, if that's a parental responsibility, but if they choose not to go there, they're, they're not breaking the Code of Conduct by?
No, that's, that language put it, was put in to reflect that, that's the address that they're saying they live in, then you need to be reflective of your current address, I mean, excuse me, your correct address.
Is that what that means?
That was the intent, to make sure that if I'm living in this zone, my address is this zone, that I'm not doing something different. But if that language is confusing, it doesn't, doesn't have to be.
I thought it meant the child was going to the, basically, like, ensuring the child lives in the assigned zone, I, I thought it meant they were going to the same school in the same zone, which many of our children.
If that's, because of school choice, we obviously know that would not penalize a student, because they're going, they've taken advantage of school choice. That was not the intent of that, was to contradict the language, but if it's, if you're reading it that way, others may, and if that's something we need to remove, we, we can, because I don't want to confuse individuals. She's talking about the parents' responsibility section.
Well, I don't know, the whole thing? On page two? On the, on the large document, sorry, the entire.
Inside of the actual Code of Conduct.
Yes, the actual Code of Conduct, page two, number two. And then also, in that same list, bringing to the attention of the school authorities any problem or condition which affects their child or other children of the school. So I read that as, as medical condition, and I'm wondering, is, is that a, is that, we didn't workshop this. I'm wondering, is, is that a HIPAA violation? Because I, I read, I read that as, as a potential, like, let, that the parent should let the school know of any medical conditions, which quite frankly, isn't the school's business all the time.
Say that part again.
On number six, bringing the, bringing, bringing to the attention of the child, of the school authorities, any problem or condition which affects their child or other children of the school. So I thought medical conditions is what, and those aren't necessarily things that the, we should require the parents to disclose. And, and I don't think we're even, are we even allowed to require them to disclose?
If a child has a peanut allergy, they have to notify the school to avoid those kinds of things happening. So there are many circumstances where that would be applicable. I don't think it's meant to just require you to provide all your medical information.
And, and to be honest, that's kind of where that came from, because I know we had several incidents where that, and also, some students use different body oils or different things for, for medical reasons, and the school needed to be aware of it. So we had some issues in the past, so the language was for those types of incidents. But again, if it's an issue, we don't have to have it, but it was there to encourage parents to notify the school of any kind of medical issue that their child may have. And that could impact others.
Is this new?
This isn't new.
No, that's not new language.
Anything green is new.
I don't know when it was.
And just to be clear, I have no problem with number two.
You're good with number two?
Yeah.
Okay, you're reading it the way she reads it?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
And the medical condition, I think we have to know. I mean, we're gonna be held liable if that child eats a peanut off school property.
Well, sure, but there's other conditions that.
Sure. It says that it affects them at school, that's gonna affect them at school, and even psychiatric. I need, as a teacher, if I have a student that's emotionally disabled, I need to know, at least within limitation, what I need to avoid to be able to maintain control of the classroom. So to some, the parents have responsibility.
But also, the child, it does have privacy rights.
They have privacy rights. I'm not allowed to call you on the phone after I leave work and say, oh my gosh, can you believe Bill can't see? Like, I can't discuss that with you outside of it. I can keep it to myself. That's in our Code of, Teacher's Code of Ethics, says that we have to maintain privacy rights of children, their medical. We cannot speak to other people, not even technically our husbands, or, you know, anybody. So we have that obligation in our ethics.
Are you afraid that the parent will be?
I can't see.
Everybody knew that, you said it!
I don't know, you may have some anxiety, or, you know, some other mental illness that.
We're encouraging parents to share that with us, so we can support their student, but if they don't, I don't know if there's anything we could do, and I'm looking to Mr. Johnson for that one, I don't think there's anything we can do if they don't share, but we encourage them to share for the safety of their children and others.
This is, these are under family responsibilities.
So they encourage?
And we're not gonna expel a student because his parent didn't do what they were supposed to.
Okay, so, so, okay, if we're reading it as encouraging, I'm, I'm okay with encouraging.
Yeah, because I, I, I think if someone, if their child had epilepsy, the school needs to know about that, because of what causes it, and what brings it on, and how they can take care of it. So I think this is, what this is dealing with there, is not that, is trying to get into their full medical history.
Okay. Okay, I'm fine with it then.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I, I, and we've talked about this one, this was the one where the kid is sick, and then has to come back and, and the very next day has their work assigned. And if you've ever had a kid passed out on the couch who's really sick, like, I don't know how they get their homework and do it that same day. So is this, was something where the child would be penalized?
Is that the long-term assignment, assignments and attend?
No, it's not the long, this is actually just, students with excused or unexcused absences are responsible for making up arrangements. It's under elementary school and middle school, just general assignments, tests or exams, work assigned prior to the absence, and do while absent. And this is, oh, there is some long, and, and two of them are long.
Is that the new language?
Some of it, no, it, but it's green, I mean, so there's bits. I feel like we should give them a day, but if that's something you want to continue to work on?
Because I know we have some things that we did discuss that we're going to start looking at here pretty, pretty quickly. And if that's one of the items that you want the committee that we're gonna pull together to look at, I can definitely add that to the list. We have a couple of items that we need to go back and look at after we met on, talked on Thursday.
I, I think your policy makes a distinction whether or not this is something that the student has known about, and has already had time to work on this project. Just because your absent doesn't really change that due date, you know, if you've had a period of time.
It's something you knew in advance?
And, and the other stuff, it seems like the day-to-day work, you've got a provision in here that gives them up to five days. So that, that seems perfectly reasonable in my mind.
And that's something we discussed.
Then it gets a headache, knowing that they have work to turn in.
And that, and that's a totally legit point.
Like the science fair.
That's right.
That's what we've known about for months.
That's right. So that kind of stuff would still be expected to be turned in when you return. Obviously, you, you, being sick the day before, well, you had four months to do the thing to begin with.
And when you return, it will be due, because it was an assignment made prior to the absence. But again, if that's something you want us to look at, we can do that as well.
On number, this, I get spreader apart later. On page five, the prearranged absence form, that's a lot of stuff. What, what prearranged absence is this? It says, the students must obtain a prearranged absence form from the office in advance of the absence. The parent must sign the form, then the student must get the signature of every teacher in every class, and then the form must go to the clerk, who gives it to the principal. I mean, that's a lot, like, like, what, what is, in this example, a prearranged absence? Are we talking a doctor visit, and they have to go through that whole process? That's a lot of bureaucracy.
And most, and most times, prearranged is, is like, like Mr. Gamble just said, I know I'm gonna be gone next week, out of town for a week, I go and get the form, I take it to my teacher, so that they are noticed that I will not be here next week, and they have their teacher sign, and then get it documented, and then that will get entered into Skyward.
I just don't want to, I mean, I, I know it's not green, and it's not new this year, but I don't know what year we added, you know, I feel like, it's like, it's like law, where things just keep building and building on the books.
And, and that, you're right, that language could have been in there many, many years ago. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Luke.
We just did one for Thanksgiving last year, and so I'll tell you that we only had one teacher, obviously, but she was able to write the assignments down, and, and that way, when we left to go to our family reunion, Jensen had all of her work ready to go, and that would go back into the absences. So things that she knew were coming up that were due, she wasn't ill, so they did have to be turned in. So I think when they're going from teacher to teacher, they're saying, I'm not gonna be here next week. The teacher's able to say, this is what you need to do, and they do it. So it's more of a way to make sure that they don't come back and say, oh, I didn't know that I had that to do, and then they don't turn it in, and now we've got this, this missing grade, and so it's setting the student up for success. If I know I'm gonna be out, this is what I know I have to prepare for.
Right.
In some cases, we'll even assign them to say, hey, write us a.
That's what Mrs. Rogers did. Jensen had to take a journal, every day she had to write in her journal, and bring it back to her for the absence to go in as excused. And so did Emory, my second grader, had to do the same thing.
And I like that we have a policy for, like, family vacations, or weddings, or what have you. I just, I read that, I read that as more, if, if, like, my son has doctor's appointments that, you know, can't be avoided.
It would just bring the doctor's note back for a situation like that. That is an incident, I mean, a situation where you knew you were gonna be gone for an extended period of time.
Okay. All right, and then this will, is one to be discussed, and, oh, page 11. Oh, you're cracking me up. Okay, so this one, I actually am concerned about more, the other ones were smaller issues, but this one, it's the new language that says, to a school official with legitimate, this is about the FERPA?
I may have to call Dr. Landry up, if you don't mind, for that piece. I'm sorry, she's a FERPA person, and I don't want to misspeak on that.
Okay.
But I do have some of the language here.
I can give you my copy, didn't, weren't we all given a copy?
What?
Of the full.
Handout?
Yeah. Because I printed mine.
Can you speak into the mic?
Those two items that have been added, who a school official is, and what is, what it is an educational, a legitimate educational interest, those have to be defined per statute.
Are they defined that way, as statute?
We have a choice, and we pulled this language just from another district, we, we can change this.
So my, my concern isn't with the school board employees, et cetera. My concern is when it says, a person or company with whom the district has contracted to perform a special task, such as attorney, auditor, personnel from the Department of Health. But what we don't say is, we have a lot of contracts, and that could easily be one of our computers. I mean, this is, this is actually pulling personal information, not just disaggregated information. So this could easily be one of the computer companies, or the Gates Foundation, or what have you, that we've just given FERPA rights to. That's my concern.
They have to have, also, there's, there's two parts, they have to be a school official, and then they have to have a legitimate educational interest.
Right, which they would claim, but I don't know, as a parent, if I would want to waive that.
Okay, so are you, are you suggesting maybe we delineate the contracted folks?
I would. I don't know, yeah. Like, I, I, I just.
So for example, what comes to my mind is Department of Health, they have to have access to records to do what we've asked them to do, auditors. Excuse me? Department of Juvenile Justice. Are there other contractors that you have particular concerns about?
Mostly, like, random ones, like, like, I was thinking, I, you know, the, the.
Like, all the, all the software type of contracts.
Yes, all the software contracts.
I think this is where you're going with this one, is, through any of that, are, are any of these companies eligible to, to get actual data, as opposed to scrambled in some way, shape, or form, based on this?
That's how it.
Is that, is that where I'm interpreting your question?
No, because we are asked.
Like, I ready, for example, would say, I have a legitimate educational need to know if this kid has, I don't know, what, other information.
Our contracts with companies like them, and I can defer to Dr. Wheeler, talk about aggregate, aggregated data, not individual student data. We aren't asking them to provide us with a service. We purchased software from them, and we're using it in a way that is specified by the contract. And, and I believe that they say in the contract that they will not have access to individual student data.
Okay, and this isn't gonna give them access, is it?
Absolutely not.
We, we have been very careful about making sure that, especially dealing with computer companies and providing services, the Gates Foundation is a good example. I wrote that contract with the Gates Foundation people, and we made very sure that, that no information was provided to them that was not disaggregated, so that they could tell, all they knew was X number of third graders did this, or, or this number of eighth graders scored this on a test. They had no personal information about any of the individuals on it. And we only do that in situations where they need to have the data, like the Department of Education, the Department of Health, other state agencies require that data, and as often as we can, we don't give them that data in any form that they can use. And this language is, I, I didn't review it to, to make sure, because I'm not the one who looked over this section, but it looks like the language right out of the code, the federal code, that, that identifies what a third-party individual who can have access to FERPA is required to do. And as Dr. Landry told you, it's they have to have a legitimate school interest, and they have to be an, an official or someone working directly for us. We contract with companies to provide information about our students to us, and those need to have that information. This provision and the provisions in the federal code which allow this, allow us to give those people the information, because they're doing the work directly for us. And we don't, and any of their contracts ever permit them to provide any of that information to any third party, only to provide it back to us.
Okay.
So this is not creating a problem.
Okay, we are protected by our own contracts.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Is that all for FERPA? Oh, no. Oh, okay. Because I didn't write, like, FERPA down on my notes. Like, this one is very simple. On page 17, we tell kids on the bus that they can't bring food or drinks on the bus, which maybe should be changed to open food or drinks. Like, I know we don't want food, but we, they need to bring their lunchboxes, and not be potentially in trouble for it. I don't know how that one can be misinterpreted. It reads, bring no animals, got it, glass containers, and skateboards, food or drinks on the bus. It seems like they need to bring their lunch. I'm, I'm sticking to that one.
Open container, maybe you said.
That's what I said, yeah.
No open containers.
Page 18. Okay, so then we get into the, the sort of somewhat new cellphone rules. And it becomes confusing to me, because, like, in this instance, on page 18, this says, while cellphones and other electronic devices are normally not allowed to be visible on the bus, in a situation when there is a substantial delay, the bus driver may give permission for students to use their cellphone, which I think is, is probably, you know, to call their parents. But like, right above it, you say, while on the school bus, students may use their personal devices for non-disruptive activities, such as completing schoolwork, reading privately, listening to music with earphones. That, I do that on my phone, so these, it's just contradictory.
And that's something I'd have to get Mr. Fender on, because he did this section, And that's something I'd have to get Mr. Fender on, because he did this section, and I believe, I don't think that's a new, new, new language.
It's not green.
That's something he put in two years ago. So that's something I would have to get with Mr. Fender on, because I think that was feedback that he'd gotten from his bus drivers and had conversations with them about behavior on the bus. So, and he redid that section about two years ago. So that's some old language that he put in a couple of years ago. So if that's something you want looked at, we could definitely look at that as well.
Okay.
And that's not a problem.
I'm almost, I'm almost done. Okay, and then, this is again cellphone stuff. On page 25, "It is strictly prohibited to record, display, distribute, and/or transmit pictures, text, email messages, video, and/or audio recording while on school grounds." It says it again, "Underbring your own device," where it's like, no, it's okay. But we also then give kids an email account. So it's really confusing to me, like, in the, in here, whether or not, we're not going to let you email on your device? Like, like, what are, like...
I think it's saying that these are the two things that don't apply of all, of that list of rules, that you can do this.
Not on the top one, right?
You're, you're talking about halfway in the page, BYOD schools?
That one is an exception, but above it, one, two, three, four bullets down, it's the same thing. And in not BYOD schools, they can't use their electronic devices. And yet we give them an email account. It seems, it just seems like our, our whole electronic policy might be a little confused. Unless I'm just a little confused.
And I know we looked at the cellphone policy, I believe that was last year, because Mr. Dodd and I actually looked at this section and cleaned up some language there, but if we need to go, go back and look at that again, if it's, it's confusing.
Well, th- this is the list of general rules, but then the next paragraph tells you that for BYOD schools, that rule is an exception. It doesn't apply to you.
Right. But then we also give them, we're, we're, like, on another page, we give them access to office, we give them access to... I just don't understand, I understand completely if a teacher wants to say, "There's no, no devices in my classroom." I mean, I have no problem with that. But, like, we're codifying it that schools with BYOD could email, using their, their phone, a teacher of, an assignment, whereas other schools absolutely can't. And yet we're giving them MS Word, we're giving them, or Office, we're giving them an email account.
But they're using a school district device to do that.
But we don't have enough devices at most of our schools, or, on our end of the county at least. So it seems...
So then those schools should turn into a BYOD school.
Well, then we need a lot more BYOD schools, because it isn't just Umatilla one.
We have more than that. We have more BYOD schools than that.
We have all the way into the elementary level.
Yeah.
So, and, and that's a school-based decision. So, so if a school wants to do that, then they can come forward and say, "We want to be a bring-your-own-device school." And then, suddenly, these two things don't apply, and then you'd be able to use your personal cellphone to email that assignment. But until that school gives that go-ahead, then I'm not sure where the authority would be to say, "You can't pull out your phone."
Okay.
You know, because you're, you know, you wouldn't be able to necessarily distinguish whether it's a school-based function or not.
Well, you can't with BYOD schools either. Okay. And then on page 30, we have a no-nit policy. Has that changed, or do we need to change policy? Because that is against CDC recommendations.
I'm going to have to call Dr. Landry back up again, I'm sorry.
So, like, I know that the CDC has changed the recommendation for, for no nits, although I would love to not have nits, but...
Well, they're crochet.
Again, I couldn't agree with you more. It's actually not advised by the physician who oversees our medical policies. CDC, ADA, the pediatric, they're all not recommending this no-nit policy. However, when we attempted to take it out of the policy last year, principals, some principals were very, very upset that they very strongly believe that one nit is enough to... And we've talked with them about what a nit is, and they don't jump, it's the egg, just pull it off perhaps, and... Because we are experiencing quite a bit of absenteeism because of this policy.
That's the concern, is that it's just unnecessary absenteeism for lice is gross. I've had it, like, a billion times. It was horrible. But, um, like, it doesn't, it's not communicable, it doesn't cause disease, and then the kids miss, miss a ton of days.
True, and I'd be happy to handle it however the board would recommend. Vetting it through principals didn't work out so well for me. I don't know if it's, you know, we made recommendations for alternate kinds of policies, mostly just referring to live lice. But there was a very strong fraction, faction out there that really wanted to stay no-nit. So it didn't get changed, and I wish that it would, but I'm not quite sure how to go about that.
If you, if you don't agree with it, Superintendent, how do you feel about it? Because just even thinking about it, my head's starting to itch.
I know, I do. I know, right? It's not that I like, it's not that I like them, and I know that, I know it's, it can be very frustrating, but at the same time, we want to, our children to be at school learning.
Well, I wonder too, and I'm, I'm just gonna, I, I just wonder, we can't predict when the nit's going to hatch. And, and predictably, if we're in a class, and you have nits, and you're staying, and you, they hatch in the middle of the school day, you could potentially now be affecting four more kids. So now we're, we're not, and I know habitually it's the same kids, so I understand that, and we've got those kids out for a long time. But could we not then have seven kids out in a classroom as opposed to one?
Well, we have the policy right now. I mean, we, so, I don't know.
No, but I mean, if it's taken away, is what, is what I'm saying. If we, if we reverse that policy, are we going to be dealing with a different kind of attendance issue? Because now my kids can't come to school because they got lice from, I'm not going to use you anymore.
From nurses, from our medical, from our nurses.
Right.
The recommendation from the nurses and Dr. Perez, who oversees our medical plan, is that even if it did hatch, they don't jump. You would have to have those students sharing brushes and combs.
Or coats.
Or coats, yes. Backpacks are...
We teach them elbow, elbow, knee, knee when they're reading, and if their heads are together when they're reading at the elementary level. They, they are not jumping, they're walking.
Headphones?
Headphones. Great example.
Headphones are...
I would love to take credit from that one, but it's from the audience.
That's a great one. It's a great call.
But, but I think we're just opening up a can of worms if we reverse what we have.
Well, and then the other problem, if we leave it the way we have it, is it's being very, it's being done very inconsistently across schools. Some schools are doing lice check every Friday, some schools are doing it every Monday, some schools are doing it as needed, and we never routinely check at Middleland High School. Never have.
And I think the problem, I don't think the problem is here, I think it's in the implementation, and, and also making sure that we provide the family who is dealing with that, the, the supports that they need to get, get it taken care of and get the child back in school. And so, but I would, I would not recommend removing the policy if you're a parent who's had to deal with that, knowing that it is highly transferable, that we, we certainly would not want to take that out.
Okay.
Especially if you have children that have blonde hair. And you're, you're having to go through there and...
Or long hair.
I've done, oh, man, I've done the long hair thing.
It's, and, and our social workers certainly get involved with that very, very quickly. They go out to homes, and we provide whatever kinds of supports and resources that we can to help them. But it's complicated, as you know, because you have to wash all your bed sheets, all your laundry, you have to kind of almost do your whole house all at once.
Every day.
So, yeah, so it's, it's, it's hard and frustrating, but I, I'm okay. We'll leave it be.
I mean, the other thing, the other thing is, I, when I lived in California, I remember asking the, the teachers if, when they checked for nits, and they looked at me like I had three heads. They, like, it is unheard of over, like, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's a different lice issue in California versus here. I'm just saying it's one more thing our teachers do have to do.
Some teachers don't do it. I had a teacher's assistant do it for me forever.
Every Friday, we always had our teachers come through too.
Okay. So, and my final, you'll be so happy. My final point was to waive suspension.
What, which page are you on?
I'm sorry, on page 41. On the first bullet that we see, that we're requiring, I believe this is for elementary. "In order to waive suspension for an infraction that is not severe, parents and guardians are required to complete a board-approved parenting course."
That's not a requirement, that's always been in the code, it's just not been in this section. We just moved it so it's visible for people, but it's not required, that is optional. Parents can take a parenting class in order to waive their child's suspension if it's a minor infraction. That's optional, that is not mandatory, and that's always, that's been in our policy.
And their suspension be waived if it's a minor infraction without the parent taking a parenting course?
I'm not sure how they would waive it, how a suspension would be waived. That's just in our policy. That language came from our policy, and it's been in the code, it was just in a different section. So we moved it so that it's visible to parents, as well as our school, our school staff can see, "Oh, I can waive a suspension if a parent takes a parenting class," instead of sending an elementary student home. And that's, most of the parents that actually utilize this are our elementary parents. They have utilized it, they have gone to a parenting class so that their child doesn't have a suspension out of school. So if they attend the parenting class, the suspension is waived, they don't have to serve the suspension. So, and that's always been in our policy, that's not new, it's, and it's been in the code forever. We just kind of moved it around so that people actually can see it and utilize it.
Yeah, we did.
And I, and I anticipated that, because we actually brought it out. It was embedded in suspension, which was about nine paragraphs long. So we took that one little sentence out and moved it around a little bit and listed it under the interventions, because we're trying to come and bring out more interventions for things. So we, we knew that would get some attention, but that's always been in our policy, it's policy language.
Is it a good policy?
So, if, if, if people use it, it's good. I've only had a couple of parents actually take the, the parenting class, but some have. We had, I think, maybe two or three last year that actually went out and took the parenting class, so their child would not have to serve an out-of-school suspension. But it's in one of our board policies.
I don't know, the one thing I've always heard is, is often the parents that take parenting classes don't need parenting classes. And so I question whether or not...
Well, again, it's optional, and it's only for...
Sure, but the other option is their kid not being at school.
Correct.
Which, I mean, maybe a valid, maybe valid for a valid reason. I just think it's a very unusual policy.
As she said, it's a policy issue and not a code of conduct issue. So if, if anything, we need to go back and look at the policy and potentially revise the policy.
Okay.
We can definitely look at that.
Okay. I got one out of, like, 17.
Just, just one real quick thing on page, and mine is page 43, I don't know what it is on everybody else's, but it's on the same page that she was talking about this in school. I, I think on that one bullet down there above the threat/risk process, that one there, I think it needs to be identified as OSS, suspension, out-of-school suspension, versus that it just says suspension, because it says they're not allowed to participate in extracurricular activities.
We need to clarify that part. You are correct, because that does come from our conversation on Thursday.
And, and the only thing I had was on, on the other about the athletic participation, far as ISS versus OSS, but we can talk about that later.
Okay.
I just ask that all principals and ADs consider very highly a person that, a student that is a non-athlete versus an athlete, as far as whether they will be ISS or OSS.
And that could probably be a conversation for our procedures that we need to work on. And I'll get with Mr. Hogan, who's, I think, is still here, and we can, we can look at that. But just want to clarify, we've talked about a lot, so anything that I need, I know there is one change that I need to make, as well as what you brought up, Mr. Gamble. And I know we talked about a lot of items that we can come back and look at. So are there any mandatory changes before we get to final approval in July? I know I have a couple of language things to clean up, but we did have a lot of conversation. I want to make sure I didn't miss any items, because I think most of them were conversation to come back and, and look at. Okay, just want to make sure.
And that one word, open, like, open container, whenever we decided on...
Right, the, the bus, the bus language, as well as the, I'm sorry, the bus language and the threat/risk assessment suspension piece, to clarify that. So those are the two things that need to be fixed before final approval. Okay, just want to make sure I had that.
They're the two things that need to be fixed before tentative approval.
That's right, because we have to approve them.
Oh, I'm sorry, you were right.
Do you have time to do that, Sabrina?
Say that again, Mr. Johnson.
What, what date do you need to have the final document approved?
We need this in place by August 10th, the first day of school. So we would have to, well, we have to run it for 28 days, and we have a July 24th approval date. And then I think our next board meeting is after.
We can't make the open container language change.
Right, so...
That's, that's my question.
Because those are just two words.
Sounds like that what we're doing tonight, though, for actual changes are very minor. Couldn't we just do those through amendment, through the floor here?
We can figure out what they are.
And then, and then be able to give the tentative approval tonight?
We can go through what the changes are going to be. There won't be anything, there won't be coming back changes.
Right, right, right.
Uh, whatever change is going to make, we need to do it now.
But page 17, if you just insert the word "open" in front of food and drink, then that solves that one.
Yeah.
And then the other one...
Clarify the suspension, change that to say out-of-school suspension, and rather just blanket suspension. So that has to be clarified for threat/risk assessment.
In your policy, the ISS says that they can still participate in extracurricular activities as long as they are not suspended from extracurricular activities. But in OSS, they cannot at all. So you just, because that one contradicts what it says in the other. It's just clarification.
Okay, so those two changes.
Is that the only two changes that we're making to the policy that's going to be submitted back for final approval?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, you ready, Mr. Chairman? And the matter before the board is tentative approval of the 2017, 2018 Code of Student Conduct and Policy Guide. If there's anyone that wishes to speak to this policy, please come forward at this time.
I spent 15 years...
All right, we'll give you three minutes.
15 years as a student conduct coordinator, judicial officer. You can't pass this tonight. There's, you need to go back and look at it, and I apologize, I did not have the opportunity to see the attachments, to read this, but I've heard enough things tonight to know that this is too important for you to just tentatively approve it. There's some serious flaws in here. We talk about a student conduct policy, and then we say what parents have to do. First of all, deal with the students first. What do the students have to do? To say that a student can be unsuspended because his parent comes in for parenting lessons is one of the stupidest things I've ever heard. The kid deserved to be suspended or not. And Sandy is a former athlete and a coach. The crap that athletes get away with, with, "Oh, we'll have it be this kind of a suspension so that they can still play basketball on Saturday." Suspended means suspended, no banned, no dramatic associations, no athletics, no field trips. Come on, this is about their conduct. Hold them accountable, then worry about the students. But you guys, how many pages do you say this is, 100? You got some homework to do before you tentatively approve this, because I will guarantee you, you do not know what's in these 100 pages, and you need to look at it very, very carefully before you rubber stamp it or say, "Oh, we'll get around to changing this." Thank you.
Dr. Tibbetts, this was not a rubber stamp. As a matter of fact, there were individual sessions spent with the board members. So we, so this was not a rubber stamp. We received this in advance, we then met with district staff and discussed concerns. So this is by no means being spontaneous, just to let you know.
So, what?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the public hearing is now over.
Very good, thank you very much. All right, go ahead.
So if we postponed it, is it even possible to, to address any of these things? Or are we on a deadline?
I thought we addressed all the other concerns.
We addressed, well, we addressed them with, most, all of the ones with, we'll look at many of them in the future.
When are the board meetings in July?
I have to look at Mr. Johnson, because I'm not sure, because I know we... I have to look at, um, Mr. Johnson, because I'm not sure, because I know we have to do a twenty-eight day advertisement. And to have it ready by the first day of school, if we brought it back in two weeks, I think that's the twenty-sixth. The twenty-eight days would be into the, I believe, August.
Do you have a twenty-fourth of July board meeting? You would be able to advertise it and have it? No, you got to meet before that to make whatever other changes you want to.
July tenth and July twenty-fourth are your two meetings in July.
Right.
I, I think you would even be pushing it at July tenth.
Am I missing something that we got a bunch of changes we're going to make?
We discussed some changes.
We, we vetted it. We had individual discussions that, I don't think you made the, you must not have met with them privately.
No, I did. I did. And, and, and the discussion was that we would, we would work on it after approval, basically. So if I could, a lot of the, the comments and concerns were centered around policies. A lot of the, the green is to align with statute, things that we cannot change. But some of it is directly reflects policy that we have in place. There was not times, we talked individually, there's not time to go back, revise board policy, bring the policies back, and then bring the code of conduct aligned to that. So what the recommendation was realizing that there are some things that we would like to revisit with teachers and with, uh, principals in regards to some practices that are in the code of conduct, because this is my first time, you know, living the process here, um, that I would like to take back to them with discussion and get their input. I don't want to just make those changes. So the suggestion was, let's approve the document so that we have the document to start the school year. We'll work with staff. We'll work with teachers and leaders to be able to make some revisions to policy, because there's a, there, there was some, some things that definitely need to be addressed through here. Um, but because of the short turnaround time, we will bring it back amended, once we've had time to do that. So shortly after the start of the school year. But we needed the document to go ahead and, and be able to have in place when school started. Um, so that was the recommendation.
So with a couple of amendments, then, we should be able to give tentative approval to this, and then your group will continue looking at these policies and-
Well, we'll want to bring it back, because there's, there's a couple of things that I had concerns about that I would like to have addressed. But I'm not going to make those decisions without the input from, from those that it's impacting, so. Can we also, I, I don't know, have a discussion with the, or could you please have a discussion about the knit thing? I'm sorry, the? The knits?
Knits.
Okay. And again, I don't think that was a policy issue. I think that's an implementation and support issue that we need to address. But, but the fact that she, that she said there was a, there was, like, I'd like to re-talk to the principals, potentially. Not me personally, you. Certainly, we, we can do that. We'll, we'll make note of some of the changes. Um, we can kind of send out a summary of the things that we're going to continue to address and bring back some, some revisions once those are done.
We've had a public hearing opportunity on this one. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation to, um?
I recommend tentative approval of the seventeen eighteen Student Code of Conduct and Policy Guide.
All right, there's a recommendation from the superintendent, a motion by Bill.
Second.
A second by Christie. And, uh, thi- this is inclusive of those two minor changes, the suspensions and the open food and drinks. All right. Any other questions or comments before we vote on the tentative approval? All right. Then we'll go ahead and vote for tentative approval with the two minor changes to be included. Uh, all those in favor, sign by a phrase saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right. And that carries five zero for tentative approval. Brings us down to the, uh, superintendent report.
I just wanted to tell you, I am excited about the next board meeting on June the twenty-sixth, I believe is the day. We have, you had already approved the appointment of three of our executive directors, regional directors. They're all in place now, and I'm going to bring them to, for you to meet them at the next board meeting. And so I'm excited to, to have them come and share a little bit about themselves with you at the next meeting, so.
Very good. Any letters of condolence?
Yes, unfortunately. Condolences were sent to the family of Marvin Powell, was a teacher at Mount Dora High School, also to Bill and Linda Miller and the loss of his father, Reverend William A. Miller.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll go down the line for some closing board member comments. Sandy, would you like to start us off?
Sure.
All right.
Unfortunately, the next board meeting, or it could be fortunately for y'all, uh, I won't be here. That'd be my first night in my youth camp. So, uh, y'all have a good meeting, and maybe it will be short since I'm not here. Uh, but also, I would like to say congratulations on the test scores that we got. That's a great thing to moving forward. And, uh, and happy birthday, Bill.
Thank you.
Christie?
Happy birthday. Um, I wanted to congratulate Leesburg Elementary School, who got a Twenty-First Century Learning Grant, um, which is fabulous. It's going to allow them to provide some, um, much-needed after-school services to, um, their, their children, which is, it's just excellent that they got that. Um, and I also wanted to throw out, um, my son has gone to Spring Creek, and, uh, they actually had a huge jump in their test scores. Um, they increased by a hundred and sixty-two points. And I just wanted to say that I think that speaks to the leadership at that school, um, who has really taken, um, creating a family. Um, and, um, and the fact that they don't just teach to the test, they actually teach to each individual child and give them the best education that they can. And I think that's the way that, um, Lake County can go forward. And I was just really pleased to see that, that philosophy is working for, um, for Spring Creek. Oh, and they have lots of recess.
I just want to say something real quick. It's been a pleasure sitting by Ms. Thomas, and I'm sorry that she had to sit by me. Uh, but it's been a pleasure that she's been here and representing, uh, the support staff and school-related employees. And, uh, congratulations that she deserved. And, uh, and I, I've shared with her that I also was school-related employee of the year. In our area, it's just nobody knew who voted for me.
And she represents Leesburg well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
So I was leading right out with Ms. Thomas, how you inspired us with your commitment to your school. And, uh, so very well done. And thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I had the opportunity Saturday and, and, uh, was invited by Miniola to the ribbon cutting for the turnpike. And as you, as I sat there and listened to those, those, uh, speak, that it really reinforced, when you open a turnpike, which is going to bring tremendous access for families to move to that area, what a critical partner we are. And it was interesting how it was also recognized. And so, so the resounding comments of our school district being a destination, destination district, for those in that particular area, they enjoyed hearing that. That's it.
All right, very good. Stephanie?
I just wanted to say, it's been really nice seeing all of the posts on Facebook as the teachers are getting their test scores in, and they're excited and they're celebrating the success of their students. And I also think it's really nice that our students got out of school a week early. So I know we took some, we took, we took a little bit on the, the December breaks, the holiday breaks, but it sure was nice to be able to tell my sister, oh, no, we're out now. And her kids didn't get out till the following Wednesday. So enjoy the summer break and, and the celebrating. Thanks.
All right. And, uh, this is, um, probably something that you all will jump at. Uh, you're going to have to fend each other off for the, the competition. But we got an email from the FSBA. They're looking for a, uh, appointment to the Legislative Committee. I've had the honor of serving on that for the last year. If one of you would like the opportunity, uh-
Okay. Are you looking at me?
Well, I thought Bill was going to jump at it. You, you want to do it, Christie? All right.
And I apologize. I did have one appointment I was supposed to mention.
Okay.
The, the, um, Ralph Smith has served on the value adjustment board as our citizen appointee, and he would like to do it again. And I'm the board appointee for right now. So if nobody has a problem, I'll give Ralph a call. Good.
Sounds good to me.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else?
Sorry. Should have brought it up.
No, that's all right. It's the, uh, the meeting of, of board member go-backs in their, in their comments tonight. All right. So very good. So we'll have, uh, Christie do that. Um, the time commitment is not overly big. Uh, you know, we just, this past year narrowed down the platform to like three items, um, which are generally pretty obvious to figure out what the most important items are across the state. And you are certainly well in tune with all the legislative, um, action going on. So you, you are really the, a perfect person to do that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, very good. And, um, and I'll share this afternoon, uh, I'd like to extend my thanks to the superintendent and Dr. Weiskopf. We had a very productive meeting as I had a chance to sit down with them and get some of the gut reactions and, and first instincts to some of the data we've, we've seen come back to our district. And I had some questions about what is our action plan and what do your expectations look like going forward? I tell you, I've got the most, uh, the utmost sense of confidence that our district is in great hands, that, uh, these, these folks are looking at it with fine-tooth comb. Um, they're laser-focused on, on delivering us some great achievement. And with the set of expectations that you're putting in place for the principals and for the teachers and throughout our district with the, the overarching goal of bringing every school to an A or a B, um, I'm very excited about where we're heading. And, um, I know the process to get there is going to be a lot of work, undoubtedly, but, uh, but I believe we'll get there. Um, any other, uh, any objections to adjourning tonight? All right. Then we will stand adjourned.